The time is now five thirty six and I would like to call the January twenty seven, two thousand twenty five Academic Achievement Committee Meeting of the School Year two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five. Good evening. I'm Jamal J. Jongo, the new Chair of the Academic Achievement Committee and a student member of the Prince George's Board of Education. It is an honor to serve as, it's an honor to serve in this role as we work to elevate student success and ensure academic excellence in our school. Let's welcome our new committee members and the Board of Education representatives Lolita E. Walker from District Nine, Dr. Andervill from District One, and Zakia Goins-McKinnon from District Eight. I'm thrilled to have you all on board. I would also like to extend a warm welcome to Dr. Judith White, Chief Academics Officer and the Superintendent Designee to this committee, as well to the PGCPs staff and Board Office staff. Thank you all for being here this evening. This meeting, this committee meets virtually once a month on Mondays five, at five thirty P M. Our monthly topics will, our monthly topics will be posted on Board Docs ahead of each meeting. Members of the public are welcome to register in advance to provide a testimony on agenda items, whether live, written, or pre-recorded video. For those unable to during the live tonight, a recording will be available for viewing on the PGCPs YouTube channel and on Board Docs. Ms. Lopez, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Jongo?
Present.
Ms. Walker? Dr. Andervill?
Present.
Mrs. Goins-McKinnon?
Present.
There are three members present.
Three members, three members present for, a quorum is present. If there are no objections, the committee shall adopt the January twenty seven, two thousand twenty five meeting agenda. There are, I get there, um, there are three, um, oh, Ms. Ms. Lopez, please take a roll call.
Uh, Chair, um, Jongo, there being objections, the meeting.
There being no objections, the January twenty seven, two thousand twenty five meeting agenda is adopted. If there are no corrections, the committee shall approve the November eleven, two thousand twenty four meetings as distributed. There being no corrections, the meeting minutes are approved. There are zero registered public comments speakers this evening. Now we will move on to item three point O, discussion items, admission, let, oh, good. I would now yield to Dr. Judith White, Chief Academic Officer, to introduce through, um, agenda item three point one.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much. I'm sorry, were you finished?
No, 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 you got it.
Okay, thank you so much. So before we get started, I just wanted to kind of lay out because the whole committee is pretty much new. Um, Board Member, um, Jongo, Student Board Member was here to kind of, but I just want to lay out the theme. So in the past, um, probably at least three years ago, um, academic achievement would come and it'd be sporadic topics, right? But then we realized as the board was continually changing over, we really wanted to begin looking at problem of practices. So we started this model last year. So just to give context, in September, October, and November, three different teams come, each one shares, um, a topic. So equity came in September and whichever group comes in September, they then come back in January. So in September, they come and they share the theory of action. They talk about why this is a theory of action, a problem of practice. They then go out and do the work. And then in January, they come back and they bring, uh, members of the community, the school, the field to talk about how that problem of practice happens. So that happened in, um, September, October, November. Then in December and April, our meetings where any data set that we have in the system, we bring before you all as the academic achievement to hear about our benchmark scores, our DIBBLES, whatever's available, grades, we bring that data before you in December and in, um, April. So because we missed December, am I frozen? Am I frozen?
You're fine, Dr. White.
Oh, because we missed December, you will have data also in February. So tonight, I, I wanted to just provide that context. We are following up now on equity in special education, which was the topic for Prince George's County Public Schools for the twenty four, twenty five school year, and we made them one of the topics for academic achievement. With that, I have the pleasure with me this evening is to have, uh, Director David Reese from our Diversity and Belonging Office and Associate Superintendent Trinell Bowman from our Special Education Office to talk about their topic. They're gonna, I think, bring you up to speed with a little context first. And then we're gonna jump into the problem of practice and what happened from September when they brought this problem of practice to today, walking you through that and through the lens of two schools' perspective. So I turn it over to David and Trinell.
All right, so welcome. Um, I am David Reese from our Office of Equity, Diversity, and Belonging. And I first want to make sure that everybody who's on the panel can introduce himself, herself, or themself. And then I'll continue on with the slides. I'll pivot next to Stephanie Bailey.
Hi, good evening. I'm Stephanie Bailey, and I'm an Equity Coach in the Office of Equity, Diversity, and Belonging. Um, and Tanika, would you like to go next?
Thank you. My name is Tanika Adams. I am a special educator and the school-based equity lead at C. Pleasant Elementary. Ms. Early?
Good evening, everyone. I am Desiree Early. I'm the principal, proud principal at C. Pleasant Elementary School.
And Ms. Bowman?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Trinell Bowman, Associate Superintendent for Special Education.
Awesome sauce. And last but not least, you'll hear from one of our colleagues who introduced herself, who is joining us by video from Charles Herbert Flowers, uh, High School, and her name is Amal Daham. All right, so again, I'm David Reese. It's a pleasure to be here with you all. And on the slide, you see that it says equity, awareness, and programming around the unique brilliance of students with disabilities. And this is especially for our new school board members and for those of you who are listening. In PGCPs, we have a mission and a vision statement. And central to it is making sure that the unique brilliance of every single child in PGCPs is able to flourish so that they can live their best possible life. And that's a paraphrase of our, our mission and vision, but we really believe that each student has unique brilliance inside of them. Every year, my office has the honor of being able to select an equity focus for the school year. And we tend to focus on different aspects of identity, um, that are important to our very vast, um, populations in PGCPs. And for this year, our focus was students with disabilities. Our focus is students with disabilities. And it's a potential that for the first time, we might do the same focus for two years in a row because this topic is so near and dear to, um, to what we're doing in PGCPs. And next slide. Awesome. So what I want to do right now is actually say a little bit of context for you all around some of the data around our special education popul, our students with disabilities population in PGCPs. So you can see that there are about sixteen thousand of our students who have disabilities in PGCPs. And that's of about one hundred thirty one or one hundred thirty two thousand students overall. The next box says that approximately seventy four percent of students with disabilities are in the general education setting, more than eighty percent of the school day. Now, this is a point of pride for PGCPs because we're outpacing a lot of other local school systems across the nation and state with making sure that we have included students with disabilities in the general population. And whereas that is a point of pride, it has created opportunities for us to really reflect on how inclusive our practices are and how well our general educators, all of our educators, know how to connect with students with disabilities in the mainstream classroom. So you hear a little bit more about that during the presentation today. And we've highlighted the three categories, the three areas where we have the highest populations of students with disabilities. They might look like, um, specific learning disabilities, and those are things like dyscalculia or potentially dyslexia, and there are other specific learning disabilities that fall into that category. We have a rising population of students who have autism, students with autism in PGCPs. And third, there is developmental delay. So if you have questions about any of those, um, at the end of the presentation, we have a lot of folks here who can add more color to those categories. What you see on the slide here, and so in order for our office to really make sure that we were equipping everyone in PGCPs with the best possible information about our students with disabilities population, we had a multi-pronged professional learning approach to make sure that we got to as many staff members as possible with our goal being to make sure that one hundred percent of staff have professional learning experiences about our, our equity focus. And so the first prong that I'm going to speak about very briefly is what happens during our summer series. So every year, we have opportunity for optional learning for everyone with the PGCPs email address, which includes all of you here, to voluntarily join a study group and a conversation group where we have an equity, almost like seminar, um, about, about, about our top, about our equity foci. And so for this year, we have three modules that focused on different aspects of students with disabilities. In June of two thousand twenty four, we really looked at the disability labels and their origins and how did we come up with, um, disability rights in the first place? A lot of people were surprised at how recently we've actually codified disability rights in the United States of America. Many people thought, well, this has been around for a long time, and they realized, no, this is more recent of an occurrence when we think about civil rights um, than most people were aware of. So that was a big aha. During Module Two in July, we looked more specifically at special education programs. And this is really important, the direct experiences of families and students with disabilities within our school system. And then we returned for Module Three in August, where we talked a lot about our biases and our beliefs and expectations of students with disabilities. And then we wanted to plan so that we can intentionally do better by them in PGCPs by doing two things. One, honoring the hard work that our educators are doing. And two, really naming real problems and real areas where we were not meeting the mark and needed to make changes in order to do better by our populations. Next slide. And so this slide just kind of really walks through, um, more of that three-pronged approach. So during the summer, um, we had what's called our Superintendent's Learning Series that I just kind of spoke about. And then the big day was on September sixteenth, where most staff participated in professional learning about students with disabilities and kind of got to have some firsthand experiences with what it's like to live with disabilities. And then since then, we've been working hard with all of our next steps that stemmed from that professional learning, uh, day. So you'll hear from our schools today later who will talk specifically about what their next steps are. You might be wondering about this background that's behind me. So we have two very important people in our system who are behind me in the background. One of them is our, is a, is a student who was in PGCPs last year. His name is Tristan. And he, you'll notice, is with our Associate Superintendent. Tristan was in the eighth grade, and our Associate Superintendent of Special Education actually had a podcast interview with Superintendent House. So who you don't see featured is our superintendent. And when all of our employees saw our superintendent being interviewed by a student who spoke about being a student with disabilities, anchored with the Associate Superintendent who spoke to the superintendent of the school system about being a person with disabilities, it was a watershed moment for PGCPs where we realized that our highest ranking leader is someone who still confronts issues of disability, as does about sixteen thousand of our students. And many of our staff members began to self-report about their experiences living with their own disabilities, uh, in PGCPs. It was a moment where us ought to kind of come together and think about how we do better by everyone in PGCPs. Next slide. So whenever my office puts together professional development and we work hand in hand with the Department of Special Education, so we kind of join forces to make sure we're putting the best possible information out. We really like to make sure we're centering student voice in authentic way. So we had authentic students speaking about their experiences. We heard directly from families in about twenty minutes of video of families talking about the glows and the groves of their experiences in PGCPs, where they caught out some really powerful practices that happened and some things that they wish had been done differently to assist them in their journey. And then we heard from other staff members and what their lived experiences were and what their learning and growing edges were, um, concerning students with disabilities. Next slide. And there, we like to always have as much evidence as possible, um, to show the diversity of people who speak about their experiences. So you see three different family members here, three different sets of families who spoke directly about their children. And we wanted to put kind of name to face so that you can kind of see representation of some of our community. And, um, we just want to give another thanks to these families who came out, put themselves out publicly to everyone in PGCPs and really share it from the heart about the experiences. To our new board members, if you want to see any of these videos or have more conversation with us, we can always follow up with you and ensure more information. Next slide. And here, I know you all have access to this presentation, so I'm not, I, I know I have to do a lot of talking in this format, but I don't want to talk your ears off. There's a lot of data here that we, that represents the data that we collect from the system. So we have thousands of responses with staff members telling us how they felt and what their next steps were from the professional learning. If you scan the slide, you can see that on the pluses, about eighty percent of people felt empowered by the PD and that they could do more to support students with disabilities because of the PD. We always ask staff about questions and wonderings. Now that you've had this opportunity to learn, what questions do you have? What's coming up for you? And our office takes that information and figures out what our systemic next steps can look like. And then there was a column where each school kind of talked about what their individual, what their school next steps would be. And our central office colleagues did the same thing, where they talked about what their next growing edge was in terms of creating more inclusive environments for our students. Next slide. And with that, I'm turning it over to Trinell, who's going to talk a little bit about our follow-up focus action.
So the next, um, several slides are just follow-up actions that we wanted to come back to report to you on based on our September Academic Achievement Meeting. So one of the things we talked about is that we actually have in our two point O strategic plan, an intentional focus on training and resources to support inclusive practices for our different stakeholder groups. On the next slide, what we want to share with you is since we again were last with you, um, in September, all of the trainings that we have had. So Rosa, if you go to the next slide, please. Uh, we just want to again share with you, a lot of the training is ongoing. Uh, but we have had systemic principal and assistant principal meetings, uh, from November to February that are, uh, really focused on those inclusive practices. We'll be, um, finishing our last training with our principals and assistant principals, uh, this month. Oh, and in, I'm sorry, in February. We also have partnered with curriculum and instruction and our visual arts partners to embed inclusive practices into the work that they do. We also have featured inclusive tips and practices with our after-school clinic. So the Department of Special Education each month has an after-schools clinic where we bring in general educators, special education teachers to really look at different topics around special education. So we've been intentional in focusing on inclusive practices as part of our clinic. We also, um, have Saturday academies with that as an intentional strand, um, at our Saturday academies that are occurring from September through May. And then we also are focusing on our paraprofessionals and our itinerant special education assistants. Our first cohort of training, uh, for those individuals occur from October to December. And then our second cohort will pick up in February through May. On the next slide, uh, we did want to share with you that a, a resource was released. Um, we want to make sure that what we're doing in Prince George's County is aligned, uh, to expectations both in our district, um, statewide and nationally. And so the Maryland Department of Education has released a successful guide for administrators and general educators and special educators as we think about inclusive practices. Um, another additional resource you'll see in just a minute is our weekly equity minutes. And we've made sure that we've had a strand around inclusive tips and ideas to share every week, uh, with our schools. And then coming soon, we're specifically developing resources, um, to really support different groups of teachers in our district, such as our creative arts, physical education teachers, and our specialty program teachers. Um, the other, the second focus area we talked about, and again, this is also part of our strategic plan. This was also through our parent advocacy as a recommendation that we really take the pulse of our families when they, um, attend IEP meetings. And so to really highlight their perceptions, their experiences, and any follow-up actions that a school may have to take as a result of that IEP meeting, just again, really building climate and culture and really an awareness of how parents are feeling. And so we did develop a family engagement survey. And on the next slide, we're happy to report, um, our data through January the fifteenth. The survey did go live the end of September. And as of January fifteenth, we've had six hundred and forty-two families, um, respond to the survey. We have a hundred and forty-six schools that have participated in the survey. And our overall average is a four point five on a five point O scale. And so there are nine questions that deal with the various aspects. Do you feel welcomed at your child's school? Did you feel that teachers were open to your suggestions? Do you feel like your child's individual needs are being met? So you can see those nine questions there. There's also a tenth question that's an open-ended, um, uh, statement for families to share any feedback, um, that they want the school leaders to understand or teachers to understand. Um, parents do not have to, have to, um, indicate anything in that comment, but we wanted to make sure that parents had an opportunity to really share any open-ended comments back to the school. All of our schools get their survey data, um, on a daily basis. Uh, we do have a rolling agenda that we use in a Department of Special Ed when we meet with our principals or their designee each month. And so principals are able to have access to that as well as their team members to really see what's being said, um, about their school. And of course, we also in central office look at that survey data. And if we see something that we want to make sure the school is following up on, we do share that as well as our family support center, um, staff have that data.
Before you move on, um, Trinell, I want to add one little quick tidbit about this slide. If we can go back to it for a moment. There was a time about, um, maybe a month and a half ago where this data did not look the way that it does now. And when, um, Trinell and I were able to meet with, um, actually, I was able to meet with the Superintendent's Executive Leadership Team, so all of the direct reports. And I shared a version of these data with them, and all of the chiefs kind of got curious about what was behind the numbers, why did we have the number of schools responding that we did? And it was really nice to see how many of them made a commitment to reaching out directly to schools, to talking to the area offices, to make sure that more people were aware of the survey. And then voila, because of shared accountability, more families began responding to the survey. Um, so the next time we present this data to you, our hope is that we have even more schools, closer to two hundred, who are participating because IEP meetings should be happening in every single school in PGCPs. So thank you, Trinell, for letting me add that in.
Yeah, thank you for that tidbit. Um, the other thing that we are committed to and so excited about is that each and every week, uh, we do what we call an Equity in a Minute. This gives our school-based and central office personnel really something to think about, um, be reflective on, and even think about next steps. And so you heard, uh, tonight, we have an equity lead with us from C. Pleasant Elementary School. Um, some of our equity leads actually take the information. They may present it further at a staff meeting. They may do it at a team meeting, at a collaborative planning meeting, but really giving schools and central office an opportunity to really be reflective. And so for the next four slides, I'm just going to give you a preview of some of the examples, um, that have come out of our Equity in a Minute. So Equity Minute Week One really was anchored in adult mindset, and you heard David talk about that. That is really important to really think about the perceptions of students with disabilities and the adult mindsets behind that. Um, really thinking about even our listed biases that we bring and really being courageous in those conversations. And so our first Equity in a Minute really focused on adult mindset and holding our students with disabilities to high expectations and being reflective. You'll notice that each Equity in a Minute has a think about. Um, we give, we may present a, a piece of data or a fact to them, and then we also end with a think about. So this was an example of our Equity Minute Week One. If we go to the next slide, you'll see this example again where we actually are looking at, uh, research, um, and bringing that to the forefront. Um, and this is really thinking about, um, how does students with disability feel welcome and belong? And that we know, again, being courageous and calling out some things that are important, such as we know that students with disabilities have a long history of being excluded and segregated. Um, that's being brave and bold and really calling out what we know the research shows. Uh, but being comfortable, um, as a community to be able to call things out. But again, think about in what ways that your school team intentionally identify, honor, and nurture the unique brilliance. And then what are some areas of growth? Again, this is our Equity in a Minute Week Two as an example of the type of Equity Minutes that we've been sending out. Um, and then we have two more examples to share with you. On the next slide, um, this was Equity, um, Week Four. And so really thinking about family engagement, which is very important to us, that we're engaging our family, um, and making them feel empowered to be part of that decision-making process. The Individuals with Disability Education Act, when they think about the IEP team, it does include a parent or family member as a part of that team that can make decisions. And so we wanted to make sure that as we think about, to think about from Week Four, as a school team, what were they doing to empower parents and making sure that they were part of the process and had access to our family support center? And then on the next slide, our last example that we wanted to share with you is from our Equity Minute Week Nine. Again, where we focused on specially-designed instruction, that we know that all students with IEPs must have access to specially-designed instruction, and just reminding teachers and service providers that we have an education planning considerations checklist that should be used when we're doing collaborative planning and really planning for instruction for our students with disabilities. So again, we have a couple think about, um, as we think about using that special education planning considerations checklist. And then our last Equity in a Minute was about, um, thinking about students with autism. And again, the majority of our students in our district with autism are in general ed and not in our autism programs. And so we wanted to make sure that we're thinking about, um, the focus of those students specifically and how we're engaging them with instructional opportunities. So you see that think about. And now I'm going to turn it back over to David, who's going to talk about our Equity Focai and the areas that we wanted our schools and central office to focus on this year.
Awesome. Thank you so much. So this is a segue, um, to get to the part of the presentation where we hear directly from schools. So on the next slide, you'll see three buckets. And we spent a lot of time thinking about at the end of this professional learning experience and, and as we think about goals for this school year and moving forward, what are the areas that we should, where we should place our bets? So first, we knew it was really important to cultivate positive family relationships of students with disabilities in the IEP process. There's a lot happening in our system, um, that Trinell Bowman and I can talk about with, um, our CCAT Committee and different things that we're doing to make sure that families are aware and involved and feel empowered in that process. It kind of connects to that survey data that was out there, and schools are doing very specific things to make sure that they are coming ready for, um, these really important meetings, and that was a big part of their professional learning. In the middle, you see that we want to develop, implement, and monitor specially-designed instruction. So essentially what that is, is during the IEP meeting, students have goals. And then there are specific things that teachers should be doing to help students reach those goals. And that's what specially-designed instruction is. And so every student with an IEP has some aspect of the instruction that needs to be specially designed for them. And we really wanted to help make sure that teachers got the professional learning and got instant support to do that well, which is really, really hard. It's really, really rigorous to do with a classroom full of students, many of whom might have very different types of disabilities. Um, and they're in classes with their non-disabled peers, so really rigorous work. And last, we wanted to promote inclusive practices for students with disabilities across our school system. An example of what that might look like is a staff member saying, you know, I'm noticing we don't have a curb cut out so that students who need to access the school via a wheelchair- So that students who need to access the school via a wheelchair are having difficulty doing it. And people are beginning to call out areas. Or we might need to think about our budget. And think about how we provide access to more of our buildings for more of our students. And a lot of work has happened. In our district over the years to make sure that we're more inclusive with our infrastructure. Um, but it's been really nice to hear staff members saying, I learned this thing and now I'm expected to. Call something out to help the system get better. And at this point, I'm now going to pivot to give about ten to eleven minutes to the fabulous. C Pleasant Elementary School Team, which is going to share a little bit about their experiences. Um, and so we selected the school for a very important reason. You'll hear why when they speak. And we selected Charles Herbert Flowers for a very important reason as well. Uh, so Principal Early, I'll turn it over to you and your team.
Thank you so much. Um, I am actually going to allow my equity lead, um, Ms. Adams to go ahead and start. Uh, she wants to. Introduce our, what we've done, um, what we did on the professional development day, but what we've done since then. And then I will end um, with some different things that we've done with the district. So Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Ms. Early, and thank you, everyone. Um, again, my name is Ms. Adams, Tanika Adams. I'm the special educator and the school-based equity lead at C Pleasant. Um, and in this role, I not only pass along information that I get in our trainings for equity. Uh, but I also, um. I also encourage us as a school to be mindful of ways that we can show the unique brilliance of our students with disabilities as that's the focus this year. Um, so the, I'm going to briefly share with you tonight, some of the things that have been birthed from our September, the uh, September sixteenth PD. Um, our whole group was interactive and impactful, starting with the video that um, Superintendent House did. And our staff members were able to listen to and then um. Put out on sticky notes and post up uh, what things resonated with them. And a lot of them overlapped. A lot of people thought that it was uh, unlocking the greatness was something that resonated with them. Also, um, that everyone has gifts and they also um, talked about advocacy. Uh, that was something that stood out to them. When we get to our other parts of the PD that day. Um, one of the session objectives was participants will build their capacity to identify, honor and nurture the unique brilliance of. Every student with a disability. Um, so in our schools, um, in our school, C Pleasant Elementary. Students with disabilities uh, play a major role in our school. Um, and as our groups were broken down, um, they were very productive groups as well. Each group brainstormed uh, actionable ideas and ways that we can support and expand. Um, let's see, ways that we can expand support to families with disabilities, students with disabilities in our county. Um, and some of the posters that we made are still hanging up in our school library right now. The things that these groups uh, came up with, I'll read a few of them to you. Were monthly newsletters, uh, giving them strategies, uh, giving strategies to the parents that they can use. Celebrating the gains and accomplishments uh, more often of our students. Um, we do actually do newsletters, uh, weekly newsletters. Um. Our principal does that. Another thing on there was asked for feedback from families. Uh, needs survey, which our principal has done, a need survey. Other things on there include parent night. Monthly workshops with families and educators to address needs at home and at school. Dojo being used as uh, community and resource, not just parent-teacher communication. That's something that we do at our school as well. Um, our community um, partners also are on our dojo. Uh, and our um, one of our community partners, Officer Miller, he's on our dojo, uh, sharing information and sharing um. Uh, they have a PALS program and different events that they have in the community. Uh, he will post it on our dojo so that this, not just the students, but their parents and their families can come and interact with them as well. Um, we also had on that list cross, oh, I'm sorry, another and another person who uses that is our um. Community person at our school. She um, does a lot of things on dojo to get information to the families also. Uh, the next thing that was on that list was cross-building support groups, resource hubs. Outside resources for supports and various programs. Uh, one of the things that we do at C Pleasant Elementary School every year is an autism program. And that program is where we have so many resources um. To help parents with students with disabilities. Uh, we have workshops, we have trainings, we have make and takes. Um, they have breakout sessions. There's so much information um, that we can go down this list that people have um. That our teachers have listed things that we can do um. For our students with disabilities and these things are culminated at that event. And it's really a big event. It's a great thing that we have every year. We have uh, presenters to come. Um, and they talk about various things at these workshops. We even, one that stands out to me was the police officers panel. Where they were able to talk with parents about um, how to de-escalate when your child is uh, getting older. Uh, how to de-escalate situations. And there was even uh, teaching about how police officers can have sensitivity training and. Um, interact with non-verbal autistic people. Um, so it was just a, a. A evening or afternoon of learning how the community. And people who do not communicate the same way can still have um. Positive interactions. Uh, the other things, um, let's see. The posters that we also have, they list, they are listed in our school library like, like I said, and we go back through and we check. I check them off, the things that we are able to um, get done. And I go back and reference things that we are going to do next. Recently, um, I guess in December before the holidays, that's one of the things that we uh. Equity team, we had a luncheon for our staff members. And as a part of that luncheon, of course, the room was decorated for the holidays and of course, there was food everywhere. But we had posted up the Equity Minutes that Stephanie sends out every week. And I was able to talk with the um, you know, all the staff members actually that came in. They had an opportunity to look at what Ms. Early posts in our newsletter. Uh, to see if they actually were reading it and we got their feedback. I say, you know, here these are. Uh, look at the different Equity Minutes, look at the think abouts, what things resonated with you. Here are the markers, here are the sticky notes. Put it on which ones that you all have done or the things that have resonated with you. And that was something that was also very impactful. Uh, we have the staff members notes that they made for us to look at and reference. Uh, and we do. So actually coming up, um, we actually have an opportunity to do another event uh, in. February for Valentine's. I'm going to do another one as soon as uh, Principal Early approves what uh. What event I'll be able to do and what things will be able to have. But it'll be uh, something else along that lines that equity. Will be able to uh, have some teaching, uh, teaching moments in there with the staff members. Um. So the work that we do at our school with our students is very important and um. We work to make sure that things are equitable in our schools, in our district and um. In the community and in our county. And that is something that is very special to my principal. Uh, and it is something that she is passionate about. And not only is she passionate about it, but it moves her to action. Uh, and she can tell you better than I can the different initiatives and different programs that she has coming up, uh, coming down the pike. Um, because she is so passionate about this thing, uh, these things that she is um. Going to start facilitating. So with that, I will uh, introduce to you uh, my principal, uh, Ms. Desiree Early.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. I appreciate that. And once again, I bring you greetings from the C Pleasant School Community. Um, I have been at C Pleasant, this is my eighteenth year. Um, and I started very early into us having an autism program. Um, I can proudly say now that our program spans across all of our classrooms. And so uh, most of our students are included in the general, general education um, classrooms. And we also have self-contained classes as well. Um, but I am very, very passionate, like um, Ms. Adams said, and um, I just sincerely appreciate the support. Um, that the equity team has provided to us this year. Um. So what you're looking at now on the slide um, is our learn and support session. Um, the equity team has just become a part of our family um, this year. Um, we've had. Such an increase in students with disabilities and um, students on the autism spectrum come into our school this year. And so. Just trying to figure out how we can make sure that we have the appropriate amount of resources um, to support those students. Um, but really something that is near and dear to my heart, considering that we have so many career changers. Um, and um, just so many varied needs of students who are coming into schools. I wanted to make sure how did, how do we set our staff up for success? Um, I have a very, very, I have a small school, but a very large staff. Um, and so it takes very, very intentional work for us to work together in classrooms. And I have at least two uh, two uh, staff members in every class. And I'm saying at least because there could be up to six. Um, just supporting students. And so that takes a lot of communication, that takes a lot of training. Um. And so the purpose of this learn and support, um, in addition to all the things that Ms. Adams has said, we invited district leaders into our school. Just to talk about and hear from um, some of our staff members. And how can we all collaborate effectively to make sure that we're meeting the needs of. The, our human resources, our staff members, um, which ultimately makes sure that our students are successful. Um, and so that, that was very, very um, instrumental um, in making sure that we're meeting our goals and. Um, making sure that our students are successful. Um, we heard from, we've done a needs assessment with specifically with our support staff. Um, and with our teaching staff because they have very, very different needs. And so um, what we landed on is we want to make sure that. Our district leaders can come into the classroom and have some experiences. So that when we're thinking about and we're planning um, behind the scenes, that we're actually getting real life experiences. Um, and considering that when we're planning. Um, um, Stephanie has come in and just. Made a, a family environment for our kindergarten class. Um, and so we have uh, many students in that class and they require a lot of support. Um, and um, Stephanie is our equity coach and she said, I'm, I'm coming in, I'm bringing Starbucks. And I'm going to put my gloves on and we're going to get to work. And that's what she's done. Um, and I just appreciate that level of commitment and the example that that shows that, you know, we're in this together. Um, and that is what we really want to express to our staff. Um. A couple of other things, because I know I've run out of time. Um, but a couple of other things, we have expanded our work with the professional development of specially designed instruction. Um, in addition to the things that we've gotten from the district, I have also invited the special education department. Um, to come to some collaborative planning so that we can make sure that our work is concrete. Um, and to kind of pull, pull the work out of what we're seeing in the curriculum. And um, we've had learning walks around it, just to make sure that that keeps us honest with the work that we're doing with specially designed instruction. Um, we've also for our families created a template um, for a presentation. A lot of times when families come to IEP meetings. And I sincerely appreciate the data that you just showed. Um, because when they come, they're oftentimes hearing things that are heavy. And they're hearing things that are um, are more so deficits. And so to present uh. Uh, Maryland Online, just a platform for teachers, we want to make sure that it's inviting, that it's warm, that they feel like they're a part of the process, but. It's also um, palatable for them to really get the information. So we've um, created a presentation for them. To kind of follow along in the process more effectively. Um, also, let's see, let's see, let's see. I think I've covered everything. Um. Oh, one more thing. We had, and this what you're seeing now, um, is it's, it's expands from our luncheon. Um, and so teachers got an opportunity to write down some of their thoughts with our Equity Minutes. Um, and just making sure that there's continued awareness in our classrooms. Um, because I said we have students with autism in every single classroom. Um, one of our teachers had the opportunity to have a teachable moment. And so we are just making sure that there's awareness and intolerance and love and support for all of our students in our building. Um, and there was a student that was having a meltdown in the, in the hallway. Um, and the teacher noticed that some of her students were laughing. And so she said, okay, she, she stopped it. And then she also took the students up. Pause instruction to have a teachable moment of how we support students and understanding their different needs. And she just said. That it was just a very, very fruitful conversation. And so what that made me think about is how can we also equip teachers who have those. Maybe uncomfortable conversations and turn them into teachable moments um, to make sure that our, our classrooms and our school are really, really. Um, inclusive. So that's a very, very brief um, just overview of my heart, Ms. Adams' heart. And what we do at C Pleasant Elementary School. Um, but I again sincerely appreciate um, uh, us being able to share just a small bit. Of the things that we're doing to continue the work in equity and special education this school year.
I'm sorry, I forgot one thing. Will I be able to say one thing uh, that I forgot?
Absolutely, go for it and then we'll move on.
Okay. All right. Uh, as Principal Early was talking, I forgot. Our students with disabilities, they do the morning announcements. Uh, that's one way that they show their brilliance. They do the morning announcements, they do the weather, they do the. Um, the joke of the day and the sports and all that. Um, so they actually run that. And even when um, we have different contests like door contests and things like that. Our students with disabilities, they come out to the door and they explain, you know, whatever the um, like it. Uh, the last thing that they did was um. Uh, holidays around the world. So everyone had to decorate their doors and present their doors. And they did a great job at that. So I'm sorry, as, as she was talking, I thought about some of those also ways that I, oh, okay.
For being so passionate. So thank you, C Pleasant, for presenting that to us. One thing I want to underscore is that there were probably about maybe fifteen to twenty people. From our district office at the school during that learn day, from human resources, people who do staffing, people from my office. People from the Department of Special Education, people from so many different um, parts of our school system, professional learning. And one of the outcomes of that meeting, and this is very important. Stephanie is holding us accountable for spending time in C Pleasant in a classroom environment. I haven't taught high school social studies since two thousand eight. But I, as a central office person, need to have the direct experience today of what it's like in this context. And what's happening is people who are from our central office teams are beginning to advocate a little bit differently. About the needs of schools because we're having a very firsthand experience about what it's like right now. So you know, our principal talked about when we're planning and thinking and doing all of these things, what's informing our practice? And it needs to be that hands-on. Grounded experience. We have three minutes of the video we're going to show you from Flowers and then we're going to close the presentation, open it up for questions.
Uh, my name is Amal Daham. I'm an educator at Charles Herbert Flowers High School. And I'm also a proud uh, equity-based uh, lead at my school. Uh, since, since three years. Uh, I find that my, my uh. Status as a school-based equity lead is invaluable. I love it so much. Um, so before that day, we, we uh, had all the training, professional developments and all. Uh, the resources and those resources helped us a lot plan and execute the day. Uh, the way we are, uh, and I'm, I talk about myself, the way I was very comfortable doing it. Uh, in front of the, all the hundred fifty plus uh, uh, staff. And I brought to say that uh, um, I have on the team, uh, Assistant Principal. Ms. Ware, who was also very helpful. And we worked together and we had people also from the central office. Uh, who were also very um, saw how engaged the staff uh, was. And it was centered around the unique brilliance of students with disabilities. It was part about uh, the families, the students themselves. So everybody was represented on that day. Uh, feedback was also requested from staff at the end of the day. Uh, and one form of the feedback was uh, what, what were the next steps you would like uh, to take? And what do you think would help uh, best the IP students shine in their performance at uh, PG CPS? And we got a lot of feedback and they were shared with Equity Office. I'm working with Mrs. Bailey and, and Equity Office to, on a project. With the goal of allowing students to share what works best for them. Mrs. Bailey and I came in person to school and we met with Dr. Brown for Visioning and Support. And then also the IEP Coordinator, Department Chair, Ms. Greg McGregor. She provided me with a list of IP students and through their case managers.
That's a perfect place to stop. Alright, so for the Q and A, we are, this kind of concludes our presentation. One other thing I wanted to really underscore is that my office has a theory of action that really focuses on building capacity that is not the principal or the assistant principal. So our office works directly with school-based Equity Leads, which is normally a teacher. It could be somebody who's in a not classroom position or a media specialist. And in some instances, it could be the secretary or administrative assistant in the school. So we work directly with them to build their capacity to lead for Equity. Hoping that as they do other things in the system or stay where they are, there are a lot of voices that are being actualized to make a difference for as many of our population as possible. And with that, I turn it back to, I think I'm turning it back to the chair, right? Yes.
First, I just want to say thank you so much for your presentation. It was first, it was beautiful and I love to see the, um, the progress from our first meeting in September and just seeing it now, seeing it all kind of fold together, actually it was really great and I actually loved it. So, I, um, I first, I will be opening up the floors for discussion. Is there any questions? Board members? No? Oh, Dr. Andel.
Yes, thank you all so much for your presentation, for your time and willingness to come out and share your experiences at your school. Seat Pleasant is near and dear to me. I grew up in Landover and so went to a church in Seat Pleasant. So love to hear that this is taking place in one of my homes. I, I wanted to hear a little bit more about the summer learning series. I feel like a lot of what you all spoke to in terms of outcomes, or at least in what I've read. They were specific to the systemic PD Day. I'm not sure if that's correct or if I missed it. So I was just curious to hear more about the summer learning series. I know it was open to all teams, but can you share who attended? You know, how many, if there were any specific outcomes of the series? And I don't know if, if any of the staff from Seat Pleasant Elementary were able to take part. I'd just like to hear a little bit more about that.
David, before you, I turn it over to you, what I'll, I'll say is, over the last, David, what, five years maybe? Five years, we've had an Equity Series every single summer, looking at voluntary, voluntary experience for any staff member and usually it's about a topic. Interestingly enough, before, you've heard me refer to, in April, we had some parents come to the board meeting. But before then, we had already decided that this year would be the year that the system would focus on special education. So it was like these perfect storms colliding. So I just wanted to give context to that. It's interesting, you heard David say that it was so powerful when we, we go from summer series, that's optional. To that day in the school year where every single staff member in the entire district participated. For him to say it was so impactful that next year, this might be the first time we ever do the same topic two years in a row. But David, with that, I'll turn it over for you to talk about the summer series and to respond to her question.
Absolutely, so I'm going to, I'm going to try to be succinct, Dr. Andel, not because I don't have a lot to say, but because I have so much to say. But I really want to try to get the essence of your question. So every year we do a summer series and the first year we did it, we had about a thousand people from the system who signed up to do a book study around a book called Biased. And so what we quickly realize is we have to get ourselves organized to have small group discussions that are led by volunteer people who say, I want to do this summer series, but I raise my hand to lead a group of about five to seven people in a conversation. So in the background, my office and now Special Education are working to build the capacity of people to facilitate these Equity-focused conversations with a random assortment of people throughout the system. So we do a spreadsheet, we put people into groups and you might have a parent engagement assistant, a bus driver, an admin assistant or a, a board, the Chair of the Board of Education in a conversation together about whatever the Equity-focused topic is. So that's kind of how the structure of it works. This year, I can't remember the exact number, maybe three to four hundred people signed up. It's completely voluntary. Some people are excitedly looking forward to it. And some people just kind of hear about it and say, oh, I want to participate in this session. We learned during that summer session to crafting the larger day for everyone. So it's kind of like a microcosm, a learning experience for us and then everybody experiences the PD on the sixteenth.
I would also just add, we've done where it's been a book study, we've done where it's been a movie series. A series of videos and I think what's important about his structure is it's not about hierarchy in the system. It's about mutual learning and respect. You could have a paraprofessional leading your group and you could have on that group the superintendent in. So it's about the collective knowledge in the room and that everyone is valued to bring importance to the work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, okay, Ms. Goins-McKens.
Um, my question, originally I was going to give Dr. Reese additional time. But it looks like we've got a lot of time tonight, so that's not as much of a concern. My other question was going to be, how much are we tracking? Like, how many people are actually involved in this? I know you said it is not attached to people's hierarchy within the system. But do we have the numbers to show? Like, these are the number of teachers that are showing up. These are the number of mid-level administrators, et cetera. Like, how specific data do we have?
Hold call, Stephanie.
We do have specific data about attendees through our eDoctrina platform. So I don't know off the top of my head, but we could definitely pull down the data on those who participated both for the summer learning series as well as for September sixteenth.
I think we have about eleven to twelve thousand people who signed up out of the sixteen thousand employees who are tracked. We do know that sometimes to get to the bus lots, it could be a complication. We did get to all the food services, so when we say every employee, we mean every employee. And sometimes our numbers aren't as high because people might be in a space together and might not know how to go in and log into eDoctrina. So we're not at a hundred percent, but we're definitely at a lot.
And I just wanted to add, just for context, eDoctrina is the system and platform that we use for all professional development. Whoever's holding the professional development puts the information in the eDoctrina and then the staff that's partaking in whatever that PD is has to sign up. That's how we can grab data and log. The other thing I would just add is, David, you did a survey. I would think that's a data point for, I know when we did the systemic day, we all did survey of how that experience was.
Yeah, so we did get about five thousand survey responses from people who participated. So that's another way of looking at capturing data and people's experiences with the learning. And we can share that too when we get more specific, so we'll share all that back with you.
Thank you all so much.
Dr. Hendelfo again. And just to also add, board members, remember that you guys can also reinstate, I said reinstate. You guys also can follow up with the, um, the data to either Dr. White or Dr. Reese or anybody on the team.
Thank you, I forgot I had a second question, but I ran out of time anyway. So my, my question was, with the data that you shared, I believe this is on slide nine. You mentioned, you know, the number of survey respondents, the third bullet point that you listed as pluses. It says, schools are currently implementing ideas generated by staff and students as a result of the PD. Do you know, and I don't, maybe, again, maybe we have people here from Seat Pleasant who can speak to this. But do you have a sense of, you know, what specifically, what things were, have actually been implemented? As a result of your PDs, I don't know if your survey data specifically asks that and if you have something to kind of speak to some of the things that you're seeing that schools have actually kind of grabbed a hold to and have actually taken and implemented.
So David, if you could speak to, oh, I'm sorry, Tanika. David, Tanika can respond, but if you could speak to the fact that, you might have said this, but I just want to bring clarity to it. That there's an Equity Lead in every single building that will have kept the focus on this work. And the other thing I would add is when we got to the systemic day, I pulled the whole division of academics together. But my entire Special Education team was Churnell, was I don't know how many people, I sent a staff member to every single school from my team on that one day. And then the Equity Leads are there to keep the work flowing, but then I'll let Tanika and David respond about the Equity Lead.
Absolutely, Ms. Adams, I'll go after you.
Okay, of all the, all the ideas that the staff members came up with. I actually do go back and check them off as we accomplish those things and some are going to be recurring. So like I said, as I was talking, we do have the newsletter going with different strategies for our families, the survey was done, the continuing communication via dojo is something that we also do. But inside, inside the school, we are about to celebrate the gains and accomplishments of some of the students because now this is our testing time. So that's an initiative that I'm about to do. There's benchmark going on right now. There was some I-ready testing. I- already math and reading. So I've been looking at some of the data for the students with disabilities and have seen a lot of jumps and a lot of increases in points. So that is something that is about to happen right now.
I can, I can speak very, I give one quick example of a school that I went to after we had a CCAC meeting and I ended up going to a middle school the very next day. And I walked into the building and the principal didn't know I was coming and I noticed that as soon as I walked in, there was spelled out in American Sign Language, welcome. And I said, oh, that's really interesting. And as the principal gave me the tour, she said, oh, we have this up here because of the systemic PD Day. We have a, she said, you know, our staff said we had this deaf and hard of hearing program and the students are here, but they're not central. And so then we realized as I walked around the school that, like, just that year. They added all of these things outside the classroom so that the students knew that this was as much their schools as anybody else's school. So that was one example of a next step that happens. One thing Stephanie is really good at is holding us accountable for following up, as are the other Equity Coaches. So there are myriad examples of people following up on the actions. And then our office with Special Education, following up with principals and administrators sometimes to say, hey, this is something that happened, you said was happening in your school, talk to me about like how that's happening. So there's some soft, soft accountability and then there's some harder accountability.
Tanika, what that you do on a day-to-day basis, what is your actual job in our system?
Special education teacher. So I'm in the fifth grade classroom, in the math classroom a couple of times a week. And then I'm in the reading classroom a couple of times a week and I do pullouts and do case management as well.
You know, you the actual Equity Lead?
Yes, yes, I am.
So I just, I just wanted to bring that, that to the space so that you understand that in every single building. We pay a staff member to take on the responsibilities of the Equity Lead to move and drive the work in addition to their other responsibilities.
And I just want to highlight another example because Principal Early brought that up. One of the pieces of the systemic principled, one of the, one of the parts of the training on the systemic PD Day was really looking at an IP meeting that was going well and an IP meeting that was not going well. And one of the big takeaways that I know that Principal Early highlighted, that I've actually seen highlighted just in working with my teams, is around presenting information to a parent in a friendly manner through kind of a PowerPoint template, right? Being able to display that for families and that's a direct connection to a strategy that was in the PD that we see more schools doing. And they're starting with the strengths of the student, what they can do and not the deficits. So I would definitely, I know Principal Early, I just wanted to highlight that because you brought that up in terms of the template that you're now using through your IP meetings. That was a direct correlation as an example of a strategy that was presented to our schools in central office.
Okay, is there any more questions? Dr. Hendelfo, it's going to the cans. No? Okay. I just, well, I, I do have one question. Well, it's more of yeah, I guess you could say it's a question. Seeing that this, that this is being implemented really well and seeing the nice feedback from parents and also seeing the, you know, the principal and Equity Coaches, the Equity Coaches feedback. What is the next steps to having more schools? Like, basically, what are the steps to implementing this to all of our schools? And how does the, how does the, the program kind of change when going in from, going from, you know, elementarily to middle to high school level? Like, does it shift up a little bit? Because of course, I, I would ask the Equity Coach from Flowers for the high school level. But I just want to make sure that when we are implementing this program around the county that when we're going up, you know, each sector of the education, it's able to still be as useful.
So the reason, that's the reason we did a full systemic day. So one full day of professional development that every single school had to participate in. That every single school had to send a person to get trained on how they were going to go back and on that day, train and work with their staff. And from that day, every single school had to have an objective of how they were going to follow through. David's team, I will assume especially with Stephanie, that will begin to grab data from every school. Because what I didn't mention is also when we come back, I want to say it's in May. May for the three topics is about coming before you on aha moments for us. Like, just what, this is, I mean, this is a collective work together, right? What didn't go well? Or what we're identifying that like, hmm, like we still, you know, special ed's a big topic. So what we already know from different places is that the culture and the efficacy is still not where we want it to be, which is why we know we may need to extend. So we'll come with, like, what were those aha moments and where we think we need to take the work and to move it further. And then we'll come also with just some celebrations of things that we learned.
Okay, thank you.
I will, I will be brief. I appreciate that question. One of the things that I really, really am passionate about as well in bringing the learn session with the different district leaders is how can we create consistency across the district? So I appreciate that question. I'm hoping that the next time that we do meet, which will be, we're planning for March. That we can start to create some next steps with the information and the data that we receive at Seat Pleasant. That we can continue some of that work throughout the district and other schools. So what I would love to see is other principals and school leaders participate in that so that they can take some of those things. And then we can, we can collaborate and feed off of each other just to make sure that we have consistency across the schools.
The, the last thing I'll add is, and this is actually, I need your help with this. So as you all get to know me more, you'll know that I'm extremely collaborative and I take feedback really seriously. And so what I need from our board members is when you're having conversations with principals at your schools, ask them about the systemic PD Day and what's happening. What's happening with your IEP meetings? It's through those conversations that people are reminded that this is very important and we all need to be focused on it. So that's what I call like soft accountability and everybody paying attention to it. And to our Chair of this committee to talk to Peaggrass and make sure that the students are asking questions. Hey, we heard that you all had this PD Day and there was stuff that happened with Special Education. What are we seeing different in our school as a result of it? Alright, and then that information holds us all accountable for always getting better.
Okay, great. And I'll make sure to add that into my report and maybe even create a survey that our students can actually chime in on the PD Day and bring, bring it back to you guys. If I see Ms. Goins-McKens has a question, if there's no objections, may I allow a third round? Okay, Ms. Goins-McKens?
Muted. Thank you, Chair Jango. Dr. Reese kind of beat me to it, but I wanted to just use the rest of my time because I don't think I got a second question. But I wanted to use that time if there was anything else that you all wanted to share with us that we did not ask you all about specifically.
I did want to share. I did uh want to share something. Um the PDs that we had prior to the September sixteen PD day um and the slides and the emails, everything, in my opinion, was very useful and helpful. And it helped me to be able to execute everything on that day. Um it was very well put together and it was just easy for me to use and to do. Uh so I appreciated the organization and the time and thought that was put into those things for me to to just move forward and present.
Okay.
The only thing I would just add, just for this group, uh because you might close out and I don't have a chance to say it, next month, we're talking about CSI schools. So just another note about this committee is while I am the Chief Academic Officer, sometimes when we build out the new um plan and maybe new themes for next year, sometimes you all want things that impact academics that don't necessarily fall on me. So that's our school leadership team. I'll be here leading it. Um but their team will come and talk about CSI schools. So I just wanted you to know what's to come next month. And then also, we're going to do December's data.
That was the thing I I wanted to point to, Dr. White, which was actually, we have a large number of our schools that I won't use a lot of jargon, but have been identified as are in need of support uh from the state connected to special education. Um and so this needs to be a serious, consistent conversation from every single staff member as much as possible.
So a lot of our schools are either CSI or ATSI designation um based on maybe ESOL and or special ed and or both. So um we have that list. And when we, they went in October last year, they did present some of that data. So I will ask them also to maybe do a little context before they just jump into like what happened from October to now. So but that's what's coming next month.
Okay, um thank you so much, Dr. White, Doc um Dr. Reese and the team just for um providing us with responses. Um if board members, again, if you ha- um have any questions that you want to follow up with, please send them to Dr. White um so that she can be able to give us a response. And is there any more questions?
No, I would just add, all the comments should go to Rosa. And then Rosa will send me an email. And then what we will do is either put it in um the document for you or I'll send everything directly to Rosa that you all have requested. So a couple of the data charts or data that David mentioned today, I'll make sure that I connect with Rosa to get it to you.
Okay. Yeah, um no more questions, correct? Okay, um just um, okay, for follow-ups and um next steps, any follow-ups from from tonight's meeting will be posted on board docs. I would like to thank the public, the committee members, PG CPS Administration Staff, and the Board Office staff for joining us this evening. Um there being no further business, the time is now six forty-nine PM and the January twenty-seventh Academic Achievement Committee is now adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for um for having a great meeting tonight.